Good afternoon. Guillermo Villanueva, the county probation officer. Thank you for this opportunity. I thought it would be best if I just gave an update with regard to the depopulation plan in court.
Sure.
And then take an opportunity, because many of our conversations in the past have been around staffing and the impact that staffing or the difficulties in staffing have impacted the services that we can provide, to allow some opportunity today to discuss on the efforts and the status of recruitment. And then, of course, open to any questions you may have. The depopulation plan that was approved by the court, the most recent hearing was on Friday, the 18th, the order to show cause, at which point the judge sort of affirmed the depopulation plan that we have in place, added some additional requirements such as providing updated information with respect to the physical plant improvements, and then set a date for next month to go back and see what progress we've had. Subsequent to that, on last Wednesday, the attorney general filed in local court seeking receivership over portions of the probation department with respect to the settlement that we've had in place with them. I think that's the extent to which we can discuss that, but I wanted to make sure we were clear sort of on the status of those two items. So if it's okay, we'll move to just some updates on the personnel and the staffing component, and then we can come back to the depopulation.
Thank you. Sheila Williams, chief deputy of administration over probation. We've been working with our Department of Human Resources, collaborating on recruitment and trying to gain more staff in terms of hiring. And so we're going to be, I'm going to be sharing today's time with Director Lisa Garrett and Johann, and we're going to go over some of the core hiring metrics that we have been looking at in order to determine how successful we are being with respect to hiring. We're going to be looking at the number of contingent offers that have been made, our background passing rate, the total number of hires that we've had over the last few years, the time to hire, our academy graduation rate, and then, of course, our retention rates. And so this slide right here tells you the number of contingent job offers, conditional offers that are made after the applicant, after the applicant's application has been reviewed and they've completed the examination process. As you can see, when DHR joined us in 2022, we had a significant increase in the number of conditional offers made to candidates. We had a slight dip in 2023, but right now in 2025, just looking at the first two quarters, we're already on pace to outpace those previous years. For the first two quarters, we had a total of 577 contingent offers. DHR, I don't know if you have any other comments?
Thank you, Sheila. We are going to go over, these numbers are impressive, however, even what's more impressive is all the work that it took, the recruitment of our teams, to get to these numbers. So Dr. Johann Yuline is going to talk a little bit about that and the rest of these numbers. He is the DHR chief hiring strategist. Thank you, Johann.
Johann Yuline, chief hiring strategist with DHR. So you can see here a couple of things. One thing that we wanted to do was show you over time what the numbers look like so that it tells a little bit of a story over time of what happened. And you can see there in 2021 what the numbers looked like, and then when DHR came in in 2022, there was a relatively aggressive push at that point to recruit for detention services officers and group supervisor nights. Those are the two classifications that staff the juvenile halls. One point of clarification here is that these numbers, and for the following slides as well, is for folks that staff the, those juvenile halls. They're combined because there was a transition from the DSOs and GSNs over to deputy probation officers. That transition happened towards the end of 2024 and now into 2025. As a result of that transition, or one of the reasons for that transition to occur was to try to professionalize that workforce a little bit. The DSO and GSNs did not have bachelor's degrees, and so in an effort to try to upgrade to that position, attract a little bit of a higher caliber of folks into the position, the idea was to require a bachelor's degree. It also appays a little bit better, and as a result of that, has more attractiveness for recruitment purposes.
Can I ask you a question, though, on that? I mean, these numbers are all impressive, but how many people retired? Are these backfilling positions where they're retired? And I would say having a degree does not always guarantee you're going to get a quality candidate.
Yeah, I don't have the retirement numbers in front of me. I have the hiring numbers. I'm not sure if...
But I think it's important to recognize that if we're just treading water, because for, you know, you hire 577, but you had 640 retire, we're still underwater.
Madam Chair, can we just clarify that? They haven't hired that number.
Current job offers.
They made offers.
Current job offers.
Right, they haven't hired him.
But the point being that you're offering a job, but is that just a backfill? Or are we hiring at a rate, or even offering at a rate that's matching those that are leaving our county employment?
Thank you.
And believe me, you know, the difference between offer and, I mean, how long does it take an average person to get a job with probation?
300 and some days. I have a slide on that.
And that, so to your point, yeah, which also, anyway, excuse me, go ahead.
I think you've absolutely jumped sort of the conclusion in the analysis, which is all of these efforts are necessary, like you said, just to make up for the exodus. It is a little bit more nuanced in that the changes to classification and the recruitment and the type of academy also has an account for staff that is available to work. So it's not just the number and if the pace is equal to folks that are retiring, but also what is the expectation that they're available for full duty? What is the behavior in folks coming to work versus calling out? Those things have an impact as well. There is, and you'll see in one of the slides to come, however, retention is a problem. The difficulty of the work, the introduction to the actual work once you leave the academy, those are challenges, and folks are leaving at a slightly higher rate than we've seen.
Unfortunately, the ones that we're retaining are the ones that are off on IOD that don't want to come back to work, and the ones that we're losing are the ones that we want to copy and have throughout the entire system. That's the unfortunate part, which is something that's a challenge to DHR, to figure out a way to weed out those that are off, that are milking the system, and invest in those that are on, that are getting burned out because they don't feel supported or even have the ability to really work by themselves, because people aren't showing up.
All of that is true. If I could, if I could, just for a moment, and I know it's uncommon for me, but focus on something positive, which is I think that the collaboration with DHR is important because selecting the right classification for the work with the right background, the right person, and then providing them the correct training, making sure that they're physically able and willing to do the job. And then the last component that we have here is making sure that there's a field training program so that the training isn't over and the support isn't over once you leave the academy, but your introduction to the actual work. I think that on the onset is encouraging because you're not going to see it immediately because that means that you may lose more people during the onboarding process and the selection process, but it, once they get passed and they go through the academy, you can expect for them to stay longer and for them to sort of have the right training and be the right people. But you don't see that immediately. It's an investment, and so I don't want anybody to feel saddened by the report here and really focus what we're doing as a complete organizational and process change. It's going to take a little bit.
In response to the chair's, is there a next page? Is the next page over?
No, at this time, Supervisor, no.
Okay. Hold on, Supervisor Hahn?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to kind of drill down on this a little bit because, as you said, there, I think the next slide probably would have showed that, but just making 577 contingent offers is one thing, but according to your report, only of those offers, only 1.7% have been cleared for a final offer.
On background.
So, yeah, so that's like, now we're really down. And then in your report, the time to hire, Madam Chair, is really frustrating for me because that's one of the things we kept hearing from probation was the problem is it's taking too long to hire. So I had a meeting in my office with you, Ms. Garrett, the chief, the hiring person, the HR person in probation. I gathered you all around my conference room, and I said, what is happening? And Ms. Garrett, you could maybe comment on that, but it seemed to me we were going to drill down a little bit to see if, once they've been cleared, right, once they've checked all the boxes, why does it take, and it's gone up? Why is it, it was 287 days last year, and so far it's 347 days this year to hire. I mean, it's gone up the length of time. What's happening?
Can I ask, when you're asking that, you point out something really interesting because why would someone apply for a job if they're not going to do background, I mean, if they're not going to pass background? So my question is, are we looking at what is disqualifying them from background? Is it, is one of the questions, have you gotten high? And automatically they're disqualified, which, given the fact that it's legal, I would think that wouldn't be a disqualification, but what are the, I mean, it's, it's...
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to say, if only 1% have been cleared, what, where's the other 99%?
Yeah, part of the difficulty in the numbers we're presenting you is that we're showing you first quarter, and we're also showing you a difference when we switch classifications. So you saw that there was a significant improvement in the total length from someone asserting that they wanted the job to when they went all the way through to clear background. We've made a significant improvement to the point where we're competitive with any other law enforcement jurisdiction. Then you see that it goes up, but bear in mind that this was when we switched examination. So what you're seeing is the switch from consolidating a number of classifications to creating a new examination to making new offers.
I hear you, but still, to take an average of 347 days to hire, once they've gone through all that, that's where I'm wondering, because some things we have control of, some things we don't, why can't we get it down to under a year? I don't, you know, I don't care about we're switching everything. That's a long, in my opinion, maybe not, Ms. Garrett, you could, is that a long time or is that, is that normal doing business in the county?
It takes a bit, if I could answer that, it takes a little bit longer for folks who are sworn, and the reason for that is the extensive background process. So if you look at, for example, the Sheriff's Department, they have a lengthier process as well, as well as some of the fire...
But we can't get it down under a year.
Well, one of the reasons that you see this number spike for the probation department is the background investigators who do that background investigation.
I'm just saying, this is one of the things that we were, we were pleaded to from our probation workers. They were like, please, hire more people. It's too difficult, it's too long, and I'm just trying to figure out, can we ever get it under a year?
I certainly hope so. The idea would be to move more of those background investigators, or move more of those background investigators back into doing background investigation.
Well, I mean, again, I had a meeting in my office trying to figure this out, that, you know, is this a hope that we're going to do this, or we are going to do this?
Supervisor, I think it's more than a hope, and actually, we have seen in 2023 the time to hire went down from 434 days to 291 days, and then in 2024, 287 days. There's some things that are going on with 2025. One, the department was phasing out the GSN and DSO positions. The second thing was the new, the new recruitment for DPO.
Whatever, I mean, I'm not interested in all these reasons. I just think this was a crisis, is trying to hire more officers. That's what we were getting dinged for every time that we did not have enough officers who were there to walk kids to school, to be involved in the programming, to get them to their medical appointment, whatever it is. And so the plea was, can't we hire more officers? So we're trying to lean into that. It's sad to me that the graduation rate, you know, is 78% this year. Last year it was 90%. And then the, one thing in your report that really got to me, 65% of those who graduated the academy left within a year of graduating the academy. So it just, it does feel like everything's stacked against us, but whatever we can control, I mean, I don't know how much we can control people who will never clear the background or who are decided this is not for them and leave, but if we can at least control the hiring phase, that's where I would like to see us lean in.
I think it's a combination of the hiring and also you're talking to retention. One thing that the probation department has done is to set up a proactive supervision team that works to do realistic job previews and hold the hands of those people who are then in the academy to keep them longer than one year after, after they complete the academy. They're also doing some other things to help job retention for these positions.
Why don't we go, I just lost my screen, so I think that rather than go through the slides, because I think, Supervisor Hahn, you did a great job of going through them. Now we know. But Supervisor, I can't tell who was up because my screen just went, Supervisor Mitchell.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And I hear you, Supervisor Hahn, and I just, thank you, wonder if we have a, I'll speak for myself, have a clear picture of what the hiring process is, because just when I hear a year, it sounds outrageous, but then I begin to think about it. I know that you rely on national databases for the background. That we don't control, and in past lives, I knew those could take forever. I've had experience recently for young adults on my block who are applying for law enforcement and the investigators coming, asking neighbors' questions. Intensive, it was an hour-long interview for the kid I saw grew up, but I haven't seen him in the past four years. And I asked, you know, how many of these do you do? I mean, so the process to make sure it's the, you know, right people in the right seats on the bus is more intense, I think, than I ever assumed, more intense than probably other departments. I think to some degree that's good because we do need the right people. We know that we are asking you to effect a culture shift in probation, and so I think I will share in my colleagues' frustration, and I will say, I just need to understand the give and take. We want the right people. Do all that you can to make sure we're getting the right people from all of that pre-hire analysis and diagnostic, but again, we're trying to make sure that we're not, that we aren't artificially slowing up the process. And so I guess what would be helpful to give us a context in terms of what is a reasonable timeframe based on what you can control, based on all those steps we need to do to make sure we get the right people, because I'm not interested if you can hire somebody in two weeks and it's status quo in terms of what we're experiencing in probation right now.
I can speak to some of the process pieces. So generally at DHR, we will track the amount of time that it takes to, for someone to go through the various processes to get hired anywhere in the county, including at the probation department. And we have three sort of big buckets of time, if you will. One is sort of the assessment part where someone submits their application, they get tested, and they get placed on a list. So that's one part, and there's a list time where you are sitting on a list, sometimes for a very long time, unfortunately, and that's a function of our civil service rules. And then...
Okay, so, say that again. We're sitting on the list because, what does that mean, that it's a function of our civil service?
So what happens is you might take a test, right, for a job?
And I'm ranked.
And you're ranked, exactly. And let's say you're ranked, I don't know, someplace in the middle, right, and you won't, then the department only has X number of vacancies. Well, they fill those vacancies with people higher than you on the list. So now all the vacancies are filled, and the person sits for a minute. And then as another vacancy comes up, well, you might get called, but that might be 100 days later. So, and you have to keep that person active. It's not like, I'm from the private sector where we would have just said goodbye to that person and made them reapply, right? But that is not the way we work. So the idea would be you continue to give that person an opportunity, even though they've been sitting on this list for a minute. So as a result of that, you know, the time ends up getting closer. But the thing is with the probation department, what's interesting is that that exam time and that list time, those are short, they're fast. The issue is more of the onboarding time, and this is typical of the public safety departments. And because of some of the staffing challenges that the probation department has had, it's taken them longer for this onboarding phase, which is exactly, Supervisor, what you were talking about. It's like, it's the interviews, and they talk to the neighbors, and they'll knock on doors, and it's this whole, and it's just this whole process that can take a while, particularly if you've ended up moving some of those folks that typically do that job into the halls temporarily to try to alleviate the staffing concerns in the halls. So those folks then aren't available to do those background investigations, and that contributes to the time.
And to your point... You came back to my door four or five times because I wasn't there. So I left this card, left this card, so then they had to keep coming back to, which was...
But does that include for laterals? So if I'm in San Bernardino County and you were offering me a lateral position, do I have to go through the same background check?
No, it's modified.
So that would expedite, however, we have had no laterals.
How long does that take? 290 days? I mean, what is the, to human resources, I guess?
We've opened a lateral recruitment, but we've had very few people actually get through that process at all.
The ones that you have had, how long does it take to get them...
I don't know that we've had enough to even do an analysis.
Yeah, and I don't know if you've done any work with the Sheriff's Department on how often, but usually there's a modified background process, so it doesn't have to go as long.
I just want to make something clear, that the rigor that is required to hire a peace officer cannot be modified by us. We are not adding to the process beyond what is required by the state, and I would not advocate for us to lower the standards, quite the opposite. And so when I see, for example, a 100% academy pass rate, that's not a good sign. It means that we're doing a disservice because we're not selecting folks that are actually meant for the job. And so I view this differently, I suppose, than maybe someone that's just looking for raw numbers. In addition, to answer directly, what is within our control is to get back to those numbers of 287. I think last year is a fantastic example of what could be expected in a department that is still being responsible but being very efficient. And so our uptake, and we're attempting to explain some of the reasons, the expectation is that we're moving back toward that number that we had last year. But we shouldn't expect for it to be much shorter than that because it means that we're doing an inappropriate job at selecting those peace officer candidates. But I warn against one major thing which worried, concerns me, which is it is unlikely that any hiring strategy is going to solve this problem in its entirety. There isn't a massive pool of candidates that are either able or willing to come work for this, so there are other elements in the employee behavior that there is no hiring. And it's, you know, because it sounds simple, I hear folks every day saying, just hire more, between the union, the employees, there is no such group of people to bring over regardless of these efforts. What we have to focus on is making sure that the group of folks that we're paying are coming to work and are able to do the job. If that isn't resolved, there is no hiring strategy that's going to get 500 more officers here in it, not because we can't do it, but because there is no law enforcement agency that either has a group of candidates or a process is sufficiently quick to do that.
Thank you for walking me through, because that just gave me, and so the 300 and some odd days, is that, and then it hit me as you talked about the civil servants, there's some at the top of the list, middle, some at the bottom. So is that 300 and some odd days an average?
Yeah, the number is an average, but the bulk of that average, it comes from that onboarding phase, if you will, right?
I got it.
The list time, because, you know, there's a bit of a churn, right, and they have those vacancies, they're able to, people's list time is short, they don't spend a lot of time on the list.
Got it.
It's the time after, yeah.
Got it. Madam Chair, can I ask a question about depopulation? Are we only talking about staffing now?
No, I hijacked the whole thing, so just, yeah, exactly, so let's just go...
So my last question, Madam Chair, deals with the depopulation section of the report, and if you could provide any update on the assessments of young people for safe release into the community or into less restrictive placements? Looks like that might be slide. Well, it might help if I put on some glasses. Is that 15 or 14?
15.
You tell me where you want to go.
So for Camp Page, in terms of the number of youth that were released prior to movement, we had five youth out of Camp Page that were released to the community. The 11 remaining youth were then assigned to the two remaining camps of Camp Afro-Ball and Rocky. For Camp Kilpatrick, we had a total of 16 youth that were there. Eight youth were transferred to Step Down into the community, and then the eighth youth were transferred to Berry Day Nighters.
And those numbers are better than we've been doing? That shows more aggressive actions in terms of releases and to community or Step Down?
Those were, as were the assessments of the young people in Kilpatrick, and that was sent to court. I don't, I mean, to jump forward here, essentially irrespective of these efforts, the population increased.
We've talked about that before, and I'm clear, and that, because we've talked about all the, it hasn't changed, and then it became clear, it's not, it hasn't changed because it's the same kids. Some have gone out, others are coming in because we have a situation where more are being sent to you as a result of the orientation of our DA in the courts. I'm clear.
Yeah, the intake increased.
But what is within your control, which is why I'm asking, how many have you gone through this assessment process and been able to put in least restrictive environments?
Yeah, that is, that's ongoing, and so essentially the, sort of the tone is everybody understands that where there is an alternative, that's what we should seek, a safe alternative. Unfortunately, it just hasn't, you know, that bucket hasn't been as deep as we would all like for it to be or wish for it to be, and that the assessments are still going to judges, and judges are still finding that there is no less restrictive option during this period. And so the, and so the population at LP, more intake and not a significant new way of releasing, still generally is going to be dependent on us being able to move them to other facilities.
And I've asked DUID in the past, if you can give me a sense of the onboarding of community Step Down placements. At one point, you gave us some numbers, but I got the feeling also, just like with our previous bed report, that it's slow growth, it's difficult. So can you tell me if there are more spaces before we go to the bench and say, can you consider these spaces, please?
Yeah, absolutely. So we are in the process of a refined report back from that previous conversation. I know I gave you the large number of potential available beds. What we've been doing over the past several weeks is actually going to visit each one of those sites and figuring out who exactly has available beds. So I know it's two particular locations that actually have physical beds. I don't have the, that drilled down number with me today, but it'll be coming in the next few days, you know, in that, in that report back.
And it would be helpful when you do that if you could also tell us if any of those beds are available or appropriate for girls or gender expansive youth.
Right, and that's exciting right now in that we are funding four different organizations to drill down on the Safe Healing Center concept, which is focused on girls and gender expansive youth, and we actually just got our first two placements with one of the CBOs that we're working with. So I know that's not a huge number, but in effect, that Safe Healing Center concept is starting to come to fruition, and we anticipate in the next few months, quite a few more beds are going to be available with those other, with those other organizations.
Thank you, and thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Solis, and then Supervisor Horvath.
Right, I'll try not to be redundant, but I am, I am concerned about the retention rates, the people that we bring in, and then we bring them, onboard them, and then they don't stay. And I wanted to ask you more about the training sessions because I think once you bring them onboard and you ask them to go to training sessions, is that during their work hours? Or how does that happen? Does that happen before they actually put on their uniform? Or explain that to me.
Are you referring to the new FTO program, which essentially, in response to this, really the best practice in law enforcement is that after you do a training, and by the way, our training is relatively short. You know, some training academies are up to six months, but in probation, are actual from the moment you go in to when you're...
you're released, you know, we're, we're close to that 10-week mark. But a best practice is that once you're released, you don't simply go take a shift, that you're actually accompanied by a field training officer or an institutional training officer. That's something that the department hasn't had before. They've had mentoring programs with different levels of success. And so I think what you're going to see here as a response to it is an official, what's called field training program, so that when you're done with the academy, you don't report solo, what you have is a senior officer or a training officer with you that shadows you, shows you how to do things, signs off on different experiences that you have. It's a continued assessment, but also training. And that typically, that would mirror another 10 weeks. We're going to start by doing six weeks--
What, it hasn't started yet? Has this started already?
No.
Okay, that, okay, maybe that's my, my question.
Yeah, the next academy that graduates will be followed by six weeks of that--
Three weeks.
Of three weeks.
Because I thought I recalled hearing that some staff were upset or whatever because they couldn't go to training, because there were no shows, and they had to therefore show up to the job and couldn't go to training, additional training. So if I, I'm trying to recall that came up at one--
Oh, I see. I think that was a separate issue. You're reporting to existing staff that's on the work site.
Yeah.
But then normally, you have a certain number of continuing education or training that you do annually.
Right, okay.
And it's been hampered by the fact that people have to work double shifts, they have to cover, and then they're not able to go. So for the next year, we've changed our training model to be block training, in which we're simply telling staff when to go, and we're relieving them for that entire period so that they can get their ongoing training.
So they're, they're covered then? They're, okay. I think that was a concern that I had. And, and then wanted to ask you a little bit about the retention bonuses, the 24,000 that we gave for two years. How did that, in your assessment, how did that work out? It went away, right? But still--
Yeah, Supervisor. So in 2024, I think we offered staff, if they completed up to 2,000 of hours of direct supervision of youth inside our juvenile hall, one-time bonus, I think up to $17,000. And so we did implement that program. However, it, I guess, at the end of the day, we didn't deem it successful because we still continue to struggle in terms of staffing with respect to the juvenile institutions.
So those that participated--
Those that participated did receive the lump sum bonus. But right now, you know, we are currently in negotiations with the union, and so that's not something we can offer at this time.
Okay. And then just the outreach to the parents in the community, the cities? How's that gone? I see the slide there that you've gone out to the, you've had town halls, right, and virtual town hall meetings and in-person family town halls? Just want to get a, a sense of what feedback they're giving us, or giving you, not me, but you, you know, to the department. Where is that, where is that captured?
So Supervisor, as you can see, we did some youth engagement where facility management took the youth inside their living units and discussed the depopulation plan, the impact on them. And we had various organizations, as indicated, that participated in that effort. We also did family engagements in terms of hosting during the visiting hours on the weekends with the families, explaining as well the depopulation plan and its impact on this youth, and that, of course, that if any of their young persons were being moved to a different facility, that they would receive the appropriate notification, of course. And then with respect to the city engagement--
But it, but it, can I stop you? It just seems like it's one-way communication. So what I'm asking is what was their feedback once they were made aware of this new information? And, and were there maybe partners, our partners, helping the family members and folks to understand what this means? Because you're talking about some very dramatic changes that, you know, may not all be received at the same level. And I'm just wondering, are you taking that into consideration?
The family and youth engagements, we had our website, we had a QR code where they could interact with us, submit their feedback, submit their questions, thoughts and concerns that we would then be responsive to. So all of that information was provided to the youth as well as their family members during those town hall meetings.
Was it presented in their language appropriately, if they spoke a different language other than English?
Yes, I'm sure it was, Supervisor.
Can you give, give us that information? I'd like to see--
Sure.
What that looks like, you know, because it is important, and especially in light of some parents may be reluctant to come out and say anything or even show up to a town hall and may not have access to virtual town hall. So then what?
Yes. Some of the town halls were also available virtually as well as in person if they did come during visiting hours.
So participation rates, all that, if you can kind of shed some light on that.
We'll do--
I'm concerned about the families, obviously, and the well-being of, you know, what that, what that means also to them, and how they view their, their, their child, you know, how they, how they interpret that and what they, what they might also need. I don't even know if we have kind of a budsman, so to speak, for, for parents who feel that the system isn't working at all, and there's no way for them to access or give feedback. I don't even know if we've thought of that.
Yes. So I'll work with our communication manager to look at the feedback that we received during those interactions.
Mr. Carroll, and when up there--
And make sure we'll give you that information.
What was that about, Mr. Carroll?
Yes, Supervisor. We also did send out the recap of the community listening sessions to the justice deputies. So they have that available, and I'm happy to resend it. That was the feedback that community gave us in probation and the other departments that were present at the time of each one of those listening sessions.
And those, those were outside in the community or in the camps?
Outside in the community.
They were outside. And with parents?
In, in some cases. I would say it was, it was more attended by community members, providers than it was by actual young people in there.
So maybe that's just something to look back on in terms of as we push this out to get the input from the family members, the parents, especially if people are going to be located to a, a different camp that may be farther away from their home and what have you, and there's going to be issues, transportation and otherwise. So, you know, I--
And like I mentioned, Supervisor, we did a dedicated website, and we also did a FAQ for the parents that was both in English and Spanish, as well as, like I mentioned, they had a QR code that was offered to them in order for them to provide us with their feedback.
And then you're, I'm sure my colleagues will ask about the outreach to the cities I'm concerned about in the foothill areas, because I, we share Laverne.
Yeah.
Claremont, I used to represent, and San Dimas, but what, what has been the feedback from--
Yeah. Good afternoon, Deputy Director Robert Arcos, Office of Safety and Security. Part of the depopulation strategy also included our, our community engagement with every city that's impacted by the depopulation. So from May to July, we met with the city of Laverne, San Dimas, Commerce, Downey, and Malibu with the executive team. And it was, it was twofold. First, we wanted to make sure we gave them clear and transparent information about what the depopulation strategy meant to that city. And secondly, is, was about building relationships, because we really didn't have strong relationships in each of these cities. And I think we accomplished both very clearly in every meeting. Every meeting to each city started a little, a little tense and with a little anxiety and frustration about the lack of communication that was occurring between us and their city. But I think with the chief and the executive team that were present, I think we really did establish a very open line of communication and understanding of the work going forward and what our commitment was to each city to make sure that we were very clear with them on things that affected their city with immediate notifications related to any incidents around the cities, specifically Laverne. We met with the, the mayor, the city manager, some council members, the chief of police, and their captain to really make sure that we had a very open lines of communication. We also implemented a system where Camp Page and Afroball are reporting into Laverne to their watch commander with a status report on the systems. So that's a best practice that we think we have established there that we're going to include with all of our city partners to make sure that we, we are very transparent and communicative with our partners. So it went very well.
Good. Hopefully, that will lead to something in the future, too, because I think if you can gain their support, they'll want to interact with, with the camps or with the youth there. And I've seen that happen before, but I, I think that's something that certainly could be put out there. So people have a different understanding of what actually takes place and how they can also be supportive. Just like the sheriffs supports different youth groups, there could be a city that adopts a team sport or something, you know, to help out with that interaction. So, just a thought.
Thank you.
If I could just briefly take the opportunity, and I'll be brief, but Supervisor Solis, if I could just, I, I hear you with respect to the communication with the families, and I see it really not simply something that we would do because of the depopulation plan, but really that this is a litmus test for how well we're doing communicating with our families. Because what we're describing is what happens with them every day regardless of the depopulation plan. When a young person lands in one of our facilities, it's the exact same concerns and, and, so, so how healthy the system is in allowing for that two-way communication should be occurring from the beginning and should be occurring irrespective of this particular challenge. And so what we've learned is that we have some, we have some holes to fill here, and that whatever we're doing to bridge this communication gap for this incident really should be an ongoing process, their ability to communicate with us.
Supervisor Horvath.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just so I'm clear from, I know you didn't get to quite finish your presentation, so the two topics we're focusing on are staffing specifically related to hiring, and then sort of where we are with the depopulation plan. Okay. Now, to, something that you had mentioned was the bonus that was given last year. Was that given because people worked extra hours?
No, Supervisor. It was basically to be their full-time job in terms of supervision of the youth. So if you did less hours, you received less. If you did more hours, you received the complement of $17,000. But it wasn't like overtime. This was, you were dedicated and assigned to the site, providing direct supervision of youth.
So we're paying people a bonus to do their job?
No, these were folks from the field as well as those that were assigned to the institution, yes.
Okay.
Supervisor Horvath, if I could, because I appreciate this question. This was a bonus intended to incentivize attendance. And if you do the math, if you attended full-time, you would receive a bonus. And that did not resolve the attendance problem.
I, I'm very clear about what the intention was. I just want to, I think that there hasn't been enough conversation around what has been done in order to address the staffing problem. I don't think that's been very public here. And the fact that you were paying a bonus just to get people to show up to work, and it still wasn't working, shows not only how broken and how significant a situation it is that people aren't showing up to work, but also that this county would have to pay people beyond what they're already being paid just to show up to work, I, I think says a lot about sort of the state of where we are. And clearly, I would, I would say then, this is a indicative of, you know, a broader cultural problem within the department. So I, I know that we have to talk about hiring because we need new staff, I would say, regardless of attrition. But to, to that point, how many positions do we currently have budgeted for the department? And how many of those positions are filled?
So Supervisor, we currently have 3,752 budgeted positions, of which 2,408 are filled. So we have a vacancy of approximately 1,353, or 36% of our, of our positions are vacant.
And how many youth do we have in our custody right now? Okay. So we have more than 2,000. I know that we have a significant vacancy based on what you just said, but for the positions that are filled, we have more than 2,000, and we have about 500 youth currently. Okay. And as, as part of the depopulation process, and I think also just to make sure that we are clear about what you, which youth should be staying with us, I understood that you were trying to adopt a revised intake assessment tool, in part to avoid unnecessary detainment for young people for whom it didn't need to apply. So where are we in terms of implementing that assessment tool, that intake assessment tool?
Yeah, no, we, the tool that we're utilizing is the one that we intended to utilize. There was a question as to whether we were over detaining, and I think we've got through great lengths to try to show that that's not the case. The most recent was, you know, an invitation to the Chair of POC to, to visit and sit with our director over that area, and that has occurred. So I, that's, you know, that was an area that was of great concern to me because it's the single place where if we're getting it wrong, we can have an impact on the system. We've since done the fidelity to, the assessment of fidelity to it, and I don't think there's, there isn't any room here in, in order to, to keep less youth in. I think that the next piece is going to be after that initial risk assessment is conducted, and there isn't a least restrictive place for them to go immediately, that before that first or second hearing, to find a suitable placement with them. So I think that really my recommendation for focus and what we're trying to do is, it is too risky in that moment for the young person, but that doesn't mean that three days from then, there hasn't been stabilization and we've had an opportunity to find something else. And I think that's sort of part of the interaction with D Y D. and trying to look for other options to give the judges. So I don't think it's the assessment piece that is underway and feel comfortable with it. It's, it's that next phase, the quality of the reports that go and finding alternative suitable placement.
And I, I know that we've already acknowledged that our numbers are going up. Does that apply also to the girls and gender expansive youth population, or have we been following what our goal has been in terms of reducing that population?
No, that's been more stable. The LP male--
So are we at 50 still, or are we under, or?
Mid 50s, 54 to 56. That, that's remained there. The male population has gone up. We think it's just the normal summer trend, but we're keeping an eye on it to make sure that's not that something else is happening.
I know as part of the plan that you proposed, you, the goal is to have girls and gender expansive youth at Kilpatrick. But right now, Kilpatrick has been empty, I think, most of the month of July. How much longer, especially given that Kilpatrick, you know, we're talking about that being, you know, the model for how we want to do work in probation, and nobody's there. So how long is it going to be empty, and when do we change that?
Yeah. So it's been empty to allow for some physical plant modifications. By the first week in August, that should be ready to, to, to house girls. Of course, that doesn't answer the BSCC approval for it, but in terms of from a county perspective and having made the modifications such as enhanced privacy, the first week of August, we'd be prepared.
Okay, so we'll be ready. I, I understand, and this board asked you to make a lot of changes and, you know, things that you obviously have to consider as the population is changing. I know that you're also working on bringing Berry J. into compliance. So what, where are you at in terms of expectation and timeline for the SYTF compliance component? That is within your control. I know that you, you can't tell the BSCC what to do, but based on what they've told us to do, what do you, where do you expect we are in that timeline?
So the, so the Nightour component is slightly different in that from a physical plant perspective, we're ready to house juvenile hall from a preparation standpoint, physical.
SYTF and predispo?
The, the predispo. With respect to SYTF and the finding that required a cap from BSCC on the SYTF side to three areas, we believe we've remedied them and submitted for technical assistance to BSCC already. So we did a, an urgent sort of response, given all the demands that we have and need for space, and we've already sent BSCC our proposal for that cap and that we've already made the corrections.
Okay. And I know that as part of our direction, you know, to implement the proposed changes for depopulation, we talked about a significant transportation plan, especially to accommodate visitation. So where are we in terms of adopting that?
Yeah. So we're looking to enter into a contract with Lyft and Uber to assist with that process. We did look into expanding the RightTrack contract, but we deemed that, that that might be feasible in terms of bringing multiple families together and transporting them up so far to CVK. so far to CVK. And it looks like the preference of many families to have their own individual ride, if you will, up there. And so we're working on a contract with Uber and Lyft in order to make that happen.
So we're finding ways to accommodate families and, you know, everyone who needs to get to the facility?
Right.
Okay, that's good. So it sounds like, and then obviously, the component of receivership is now with us. You know, we've been asked, I'm clear that the process of receivership isn't necessarily collaborative. We hope that the state will listen to the input that we would like to give based on the experience that we have had in trying to solve the problems that we believe the state is also going to try to solve through this process. But we've been asked, what opportunity will there be for public input, and how will you be communicating with youth and their families about specifically the receivership process? And I know some of that is ongoing because it's all just happening, but I think people have a lot of questions about what it means, what it means for their ability to access their kids, and also for young people to get the support that they need. And so how are we communicating with them?
It's a devil era because it's premature to have any communication really with respect to this. All we know from a probation standpoint is what was filed publicly, and I don't think there's more than that that we can acknowledge to. I know that we are now in a period in which the county and county council is going to respond to the court. Before that occurs, I think beyond simply stating what the filing was, that there's anything more we can communicate with our stakeholders.
Well, I hope that they aren't learning about things with regard to the receivership through the news. I, you know, it's my, my hope that we are doing what we can to proactively communicate with family members and to, you know, I understand we can only do what we can based on how the state communicates with us, based on what we know, but I think it would be not a great situation if that information is, you know, coming from news reports and not necessarily from, you know, within. So to the extent that that's possible, and to anyone in the state who's listening, you know, I think that there are a lot of questions, there's been a lot of uncertainty. I think there's, with all of this transition, there's been some upheaval, and I, I think people have a desire to get, you know, kind of wrap their arms around what is happening and what should they be expecting, and, and what's next, and on what timeline. And, you know, I think they already had those questions when the depopulation plan was coming forward, and now this is on top of it. And so to the extent that we can provide any sort of clarity with what's certain, even if it's, we're uncertain on this timeline, but we'll know more in two weeks, so check back into, you know, whatever it is, whatever sort of points of certainty we have to offer, I would really encourage us to do that, so we can, you know, develop as much of a structure for this process going forward as we can.
And one of the things we can attempt to accomplish through the receivership litigation process is to request the court to give us time to be able to notify the families and, you know, the youth in our care of any major changes that are going to be happening on the horizon.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I think it's clear that there are lots of conversations happening in different places, and so that sort of ping-pong of information can also add to frustration, anxiety, what have you. So I think I just wanted to address that as well. I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you. And I love the point about paying people to show up to work, which I think just confirms what the problem is, and it's not, it's, it's a culture within the department. And it's been that way as long as I've been with the county, but it's gotten worse. And I know that the discussion around that payment was discussed at length for that reason, because what kind of message are you sending to employees by saying, we're going to give you money to show up to work? It's just, it's counterintuitive, but that's what you've inherited. And if it's not fixed, I don't care who comes in to run it, you're going to have the same outcome. So with that, thank you all. I know we, I started the hijacking, but in the interest of time, I think we all understand, you know, where we are. Recruitment continues to be a challenge. And as it relates to the camps and, and moving forward with that, I just hope that you will be in close contact with especially board offices whose district is impacted by those camps, to make sure that we are all on the same page and not blindsided. All right. Thank you.